I'm getting there. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights, is that why we're all here? Before we take the floor, Colonel White, former councilman, we appreciate you being here, sir. Thank you very much.
And I would like to ask that Mr. Scott Baldwin come forward. The school board of the city of Manassas voted unanimously on May 12th to appoint Scott Baldwin to serve as principal at George Round Elementary. He will begin his assignment July 1st. Mr. Baldwin is currently an assistant principal at Bristol Run Elementary School in Prince William County where he has been since 2011. Prior to that, he served as a second, third, and fourth grade classroom teacher for Manassas Park City Schools. Mr. Baldwin brings a skillset that will support the strong school community of staff, students, and parents as they continue their focus on the achievement of all students. He holds a master's degree in childhood education from the State University of New York and an education specialist degree in administration from the University of Virginia. He will be replacing Mrs. Cara Mills, who's now the principal at Mayfield. And a school reception was held today for the community and staff from 4 to 6. Welcome, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of you for allowing me to take on this opportunity. Just in my short time this afternoon meeting some teachers and a couple of parents and a couple of school board members, it's an absolutely wonderful school. It's going to be very tough to fill Mrs. Mills' shoes as she's created a wonderful climate there, but I hope to bring her around to new heights and work with you all very closely to make sure that learning is number one every day. So, thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome. We appreciate you being here. And he was hiding, but Commissioner of the Revenue and former mayor, Mr. Doug Waldron, is here. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Is it us? Is it them?
Good evening, Chairman DiMaria, other members of the board. It's wonderful to see everyone here tonight, to everyone who has joined us for our recognitions. We are always very excited to be able to honor our students and our staff for the great things that they are accomplishing inside and outside of the classroom. Tonight, I would like to begin with the Arbor Day poster recognitions. And I'm not quite sure how many of our students are here, so I'm going to ask if you are here for the Arbor Day recognitions, if you would just meet me here at the podium. I don't know how many we have Arbor Day posters. If you would just come here. Is anybody else here for the Arbor Day? Okay, come on in. Any more Arbor Day poster contest winners? All right. Just one moment. Diana, okay, I got you. We have them. Thank you. During the month of April, the city of Manassas invited MCPS students to participate in the annual Arbor Day poster contest, which serves as a lead-in to the annual Arbor Day celebration dedicated to planting and caring for trees. The theme for this year's poster contest was history. If trees could talk, what would they say? Nearly 750 students from six schools, K-5, participated in the city of Manassas Beautification Committee's 31st Arbor Day poster contest. The Arbor Day celebration was held Friday, April 24th, at the historic Liberia Plantation House, where the winners and their posters were celebrated. First-place winners were awarded their very own tree to take home and plant. The winning posters have been on display at the Manassas Museum for the last month, and we are happy to have two of our winners here tonight. We have from Round Elementary, first-place winner in kindergarten, Ari Bala. And then we have fifth grade, first-place winner from Mayfield, Diana Aquino. Poster contest winners. Okay. Yeah, you can come over and take pictures. It's fine. It's fine. It's good. It's okay. Now, you're the tallest. Yeah. Go ahead. It's okay.
We wanted you to take a picture.
You want to take one of them? Okay.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, you smile big.
Yes? Okay. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. All right. Solo Ensemble Festival is where students prepare a quality musical selection and perform it in front of a professional music judge. Students earn a rating based upon the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association or VBODA solo ensemble rubric, where a one is a superior rating, a two is an excellent rating, and so forth. Unlike large group assessment, where the rating reflects the professionalism and performance of an entire group, solo ensemble reflects upon an individual's musical proficiency. This year, Ethan Sari, an eighth grader from Metz Middle School, took a high-school-level sax solo to the Solo Ensemble Festival and scored the highest rating, superior. Ethan, would you please come forward? Yeah, it's okay. There it is. Okay. One more, keep it smiling. There we go. Great. Congratulations, Ethan. Do I have any of our early identification program graduates here from Osborne High School, EIP? Okay. We'll save that one. All right. Next, we have Osborne High School students who are entering the military after graduation. Osborne High School supports students by helping them prepare for life after high school. Going to college, entering the workforce, or the military are all ways in which students step out into the world to put what they have gained in high school into action. Tonight, we are pleased to present several students who have chosen to pursue the military post-graduation. For the Navy, we have Christopher Michael Kirkland. Also for the Navy, Carrie Rossi. For the Navy, Jordan Taylor. I believe this young man couldn't be here tonight, but we also have one who has joined the Marines, Jose Carrillo. We also have three Osborne High School students who have received United States Army ROTC and Air Force ROTC scholarships, which will completely pay for their college education prior to entering the armed forces, including their books and monthly stipends. Tonight, we have with us, entering into George Mason University, Anthony Jason Galindo, who received $48,000. Going to the Colorado School of Mines with a scholarship totaling $54,000, Alexander Charles Davenport Reitry. And entering into Johns Hopkins University with a scholarship totaling $188,276, Cameron Jamal White. Awesome, awesome. Congratulations to all of you. I think we'll go ahead and get our photo in here. You all want to scoot in a little bit?
Find out.
Cheese. One more, please. All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Good job. Now, we have a very, very special treat. As the Osborne High School robotics team is here to show us their robot from the 2015 competition season and to share with us all the great things they have accomplished as an after-school club. I believe Arlene Higgins is here with our club, and she's going to be able to share a little bit with us on what they've done. Miss Higgins?
Good evening. This is Lambda Core. It's Team 1895 in the first robotics FRC competition. We attended two different competitions this season, and our new project manager for next year, Caleb Putnam, is going to say a little bit about the team.
Hi, I'm Caleb. Recently, went to many competitions. Two were in Richmond and VCU. We placed six out of 64 teams on very low budget, and we've done very successfully.
While they're getting that prepared, both of these competitions were international competitions. We had teams from Brazil at both competitions. We had teams from, I think, two teams from the Netherlands in the first competition we went to, and then from five different local states. So, it was neat getting to see all the different ways that you can use robotics in different countries. We celebrated each country, and we recognized the national anthem from each country. So, it was neat for the students to get to share with the other students. And with everything technology, there's always times that you have to wait till it decides it's going to work. So, we are an after-school team, and next year, we're going to have two classes, I believe, during the school day, so hopefully that'll build our numbers. We currently have five mentors from local businesses that come and help us out during our build season. Our build season is 45 days, and they give us a challenge. This year, it was called Recycle Rush, and we got extra points for stacking the totes up on each other and picking up the recycling bin. If you all would like to demonstrate it, you might want to move it away from the microphone and... So, the students got the game challenge. It was a video, and then they came back and started, or before they even came back, on the way from Richmond at the kickoff in January, they started drawing what they wanted to do and coming up with concepts, and then they started making prototypes and trying out different designs. And then we ordered parts and designed and made what you see here today. Ethan's used an InGame controller to help guide him. I don't think he's using the computer right now. There is a camera on it, and when using the laptop, you can see where the robot's going and try to guide it to pick up the totes. Part of the competition, there's an autonomous period where nobody controls it. You have to program it to do something automatically. It's competition. You would normally stack four or five of the plastic bins, and then you would use it here, somebody's going to put a cherry on top, it would be a recycling bin and a noodle, and that adds to your total points by the end of the set.
Just want to talk about a few little things. My name is John Ortega. I've been with the team for seven years now. I just wanted to talk about the students and the project itself, the type of students that get involved. These are very enthusiastic students. Some of the alumni in colleges they're going to, MIT, Carnegie Mellon, Virginia Tech, VCU, University of Virginia, Johns Hopkins, just to name a few of these types of colleges these kids are getting into. Not only do they do this in six weeks, can you imagine building this type of robot in six weeks? That's just amazing. Not only do they have the idea, they're given this challenge, they design it, they develop it, they build the software, put the electronics together, and then put it all together and test it and go through this whole process in six weeks. The things that they do need, we're a good team, but not a great team. The next steps we need is help from the school itself, is to have a dedicated area, to have more membership from the students, more well-recognized projects, and absolutely known throughout the school that this is a very enthusiastic type of club. Each of these students, beginning from knowing nothing about electronics or even a screwdriver, have learned to put this together. So, I just want to say I really appreciate your time in front of you, but also the challenges that these students go through to get this accomplishment. Thank you.
Can we have all the students come on back?
Of course, the robot ended up being taller than everybody.
Yeah.
Pardon you, Jim.
Just letting the air out.
All right. I'm going to have you kind of squeeze in a little bit.
Oh, yeah, there, because that's better.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Hold it. Guess who's here, too. Thank you, guys.
Very, very talented students. And thank you so much to all the adults that work with our students. Thank you. As we move into our staff recognitions, the National Educational Technology Standards for Teachers or NETS Certification is an internationally recognized certification program that engages participants in a deeply reflective, intensive process to determine if their instructional technology practices meet International Society for Technology and Education standards. This certification program offered by MCPS is a hybrid course using both face-to-face meetings and online communications to assist participants through the rigorous submission of 20 artifacts and reflections. Participants who complete the process and become certified earn 90 recertification points and the ability to purchase three graduate credits from James Madison University. Tonight, we have our 2014-15 MCPS NETS-certified staff here. They are all instructional technology training specialists with the school division at their respective schools. Mr. Pedro Hernandez, who is the coordinator of instructional technology, is here with me at the podium, and he will assist in handing out our certificates. We'd like to begin, you want to come on this side, Pedro? We begin with Baldwin Elementary School, Maureen Ormuffin Wilkowski. From Jenny Dean Elementary School, Amanda Griffiths. From Hayden Elementary School, Michelle Green. Brown Elementary School, Barbara Daniels. From Williams Elementary School, Tracy Voles. From Mayfield Intermediate, Arthur Adawi. From Metz Middle School, Kathy Campbell. And we also have Bob Fabian from Osborne High School, who cannot be here tonight, but is also certified. Congratulations to all of you.
I'm going to squeeze in a little bit. All right, perfect. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Let Pedro get one, too. Hold on. You can get it from there. Okay. Thank you. You can go. been with the division for 20, 25, and 30 years. Miss Wingfield is here? Okay, I see. All right. We will begin with our 20-year employees. I'd leave our 20-year employees, get a beautiful watch. From Baldwin Elementary, Beth Reed. Hayden Elementary School, Cara Hagerman? From Metz Middle School, Sherri Waldron. From Round Elementary, Mary Stuckey. From Round Elementary, Kristen Watley. From the central office in our information technology department, James Buckley. From the central office in curriculum and instruction, Melissa Neal. And from the central office in special education, Sharon Powell. Did I miss anyone who's here for 20 years? Okay. Congratulations to all of you.
We want you with your group, so...
All right, ready? One, two, three. One more.
Okay. Don't go too far. Next, we have our 25-year employees. Several of them are here tonight. From Baldwin Elementary, Janice Murnan. We have two from Jenny Dean, Marie Casaza, and Anna Hopkins. From Mayfield Intermediate, Kathy Novak. From Metz Middle School, Tammy Warner. And from our transportation department, Tracy Godlove. That's right. Did I miss anyone who's here for 25 years of service? Our 25-year employees have received a commemorative clock. Thank you. Congratulations. Our next two employees started with the school division when they were 10 years old, and they have been with us for 30 years. We would like to recognize two very special people tonight. From our central office in curriculum and instruction, Dr. Athene Bell. And also from the central office in the special education department, Joanne Arrington. Did I miss anyone else for 30 years? We just had a couple of more. Okay, great. Congratulations. You were 10. Yeah.
All right, one.
That's when child labor was embraced.
One, two, three. Perfect. One, two, three.
Congratulations. Thank you all. All right. Finally, tonight, we have our Agnes Meyer nominees and our teachers of the year. The Agnes Meyer Outstanding Teacher Award is sponsored each year by The Washington Post and has honored teaching excellence in the region for three decades. The Post encourages excellence in teaching because they believe that good teachers are critical to a strong school system. We believe that as well. As a result, each year, exceptional educators from the public school systems in the DC metropolitan area are honored with a cash award. Locally, each From Metz Middle School, Kathy Campbell. And we also have Bob Fabian from Osborne High School, who could not be here tonight, but is also certified. Congratulations to all of you.
I'm gonna squeeze in a little bit. All right, perfect. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three.
I know. You can get it from there. Okay, he'll get it from you. All right, thank you, you can go. Tonight, we are also honored to recognize our longtime dedicated employees who have been with the division for 20, 25, and 30 years. Ms. Wingfield is here? Okay, I see. All right. We will begin with our 20-year employees. I believe our 20-year employees get a beautiful watch. From Baldwin Elementary, Beth Reed. Hayden Elementary School, Kara Hagerman? Hagerman? From Metz Middle School, Sherry Waldron. From Round Elementary, Mary Stuckey. From Round Elementary, Kristen Watley. From the Central Office in our Information Technology Department, James Buckley. From the Central Office in Curriculum and Instruction, Melissa Newell. And from the Central Office in Special Education, Sharon Powell. Did I miss anyone who's here for 20 years? Okay, congratulations to all of you.
We want you with your group, so.
Okay. Next, we have our 25-year employees. Several of them are here tonight. From Baldwin Elementary, Janice Murnan. We have two from Jenny Dean, Marie Casaza, and Anna Hopkins. From Mayfield Intermediate, Kathy Novak. From Metz Middle School, Tammy Warner. And from our Transportation Department, Tracy Godlove. That's right. Did I miss anyone who's here for 25 years of service? Our 25-year employees have received a commemorative clock. Congratulations. Our next two employees started with the school division when they were 10-years-old. And they have been with us for 30 years. We would like to recognize two very special people tonight. From our Central Office in Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Athene Bell. And also from the Central Office in the Special Education Department, Joanne Arrington. Did I miss anyone else for 30 years? We just had a couple of more. Okay, great. Congratulations. You were 10, yeah. It's when child labor was embraced. Congratulations, thank you all. All right, finally, tonight, we have our Agnes Meyer nominees and our Teachers of the Year. The Agnes Meyer Outstanding Teacher Award is sponsored each year by The Washington Post and has honored teaching excellence in the region for three decades. The Post encourages excellence in teaching because they believe that good teachers are critical to a strong school system. We believe that as well. As a result, each year, exceptional educators from the public school systems in the DC metropolitan area are honored with a cash award. Locally, each MCPS school is offered the opportunity to submit a nominee for the Washington Post Award. To be considered for it, nominees must demonstrate how they instill in students a desire to learn and achieve, how they understand the individual needs of students, encourage their talents, and foster self-esteem, how they demonstrate a thorough knowledge of subject matter and the ability to share it effectively with all students, how they foster cooperative relationships with their colleagues in the community, and how they demonstrate outstanding leadership. Tonight, we will focus on indicator number two from their application, how each understands the individual needs of students, encourages their talents, and fosters self-esteem. Now, I'd like to introduce you to this year's nominees. Each one not only serves as their school's Agnes Meyer nominee, but also as the Teacher of the Year for their respective locations. Nominees for the MCPS Teacher of the Year have also have to exhibit superior knowledge in their subject matter and have mastered the ability to share it effectively with students and colleagues. From Baldwin Elementary School, we have Elizabeth Reed. A little bit about Betsy Reed. Truly believes that all students have the ability to succeed and tirelessly works with each individual child to help them discover their unique abilities, overcome academic challenges, and become accountable for their own learning. Her students know she will not give up on them. As a result, she's able to instill in her students a desire to not give up on themselves. Ms. Reed said it best when she said, "A teacher's job is to ensure that a child's brain grows. I make sure that they use some type of manipulative to help them implant the essential knowledge into their brain." Congratulations on being a nominee. Thank you. Jenny Dean Elementary School, we have Kathy Jamison. No student is ever unsuccessful in Ms. Jamison's class. She is keenly aware children are individuals with various talents and often struggles. Still, she is able to identify the needs of even the most challenged learners and apply strategies to develop and support them. Students not only leave her class with additional knowledge, but a sense of accomplishment, belief in their abilities, and a level of ownership for learning. Congratulations. Now, from Round Elementary School, Pamela Cove. There is not a single day that Pam Cove's students do not look forward to going to school. That's because she's able to connect with them on an academic level as well as individually. She often leaves a lasting impression on her students well beyond second grade. She ensures her students receive a quality education by instilling a genuine love of academics in them through incorporating creative and fun instructional methods, anything to help her students. Congratulations, Ms. Cove. Now, we have Mayfield Intermediate School, Sherry Baker. Sherry Baker is known for her ability to build relationships with her students as well as their self-esteem. This creates a learning environment where students feel safe and respected. It also allows her to demonstrate the material being taught in a way that interests them. Her students' eyes are locked on her when teaching, and you can really tell they are listening and thinking about what she's saying. Congratulations to you. Metz Middle School, Teresa Cyril. Teresa Cyril continually helps foster students' ability to encourage, motivate, and trust each other by transforming her classroom. She utilizes various learning activities so that students are able to not only advance academically, but become leaders and have more confidence in themselves. She has created a positive environment in which students are able to work together to achieve a common goal and find success. Congratulations to you. Oh, I missed. From Williams Elementary School, Carrie Bland. Carrie Bland has been successful at implementing a caring classroom. Not only does she take the time to acknowledge her students' different learning styles and individual needs, she assists each student in making individual progress. She spends a lot of time carefully planning her room and learning activities to meet all of her students' needs. Her students thrive on her positivity, and other members of the third-grade team are equally impressed with her knowledge of her students' strengths and weaknesses and her ability to cater to each and every child. Congratulations to you. From Osborne High School, Erin Kimasinski. According to Osborne High School Principal Kathy Benner, students love going to Ms. Kimasinski's class due to the support and encouragement she provides daily. That's because she takes the time to learn the specific needs of each of her students and is able to then design lessons to meet those needs. Her own best practices include using student feedback and data to better communicate the content being taught. Students feel comfortable voicing their opinion in class and, as a result, feel included. She also takes the time to learn more about her students' lives outside the classroom. Congratulations to you, Ms. Kimasinski. And now, I'd like to present the 2015 Washington Post Agnes Meyer winner for Manassas City Public Schools, from Hayden Elementary School, Diana Hahn. One of the reasons students interact so well with Ms. Hahn is because they know she will do what it takes to help them improve in their reading. Many have personally seen students come into her classroom with reluctance to even pick up a book, and by the end of the year, you can see those very same students walking the halls with books in hand and smiles on their faces. She has achieved this by implementing several effective reading programs, including but not limited to Lego Story Starters, a program so successful she co-wrote a grant to get a kit for each classroom. When walking by her classroom, one will often hear laughing. That's because incorporating games and hands-on activities into her teaching is just one way Mrs. Hahn makes learning fun. Students are eager to go see Mrs. Hahn because she is always seeking new ways to excite and motivate them. She has a gentle demeanor and is able to connect with students in such a way that they want to be successful, not only for themselves, but also for her. We congratulate you. She was just recognized by The Washington Post a couple of weeks ago, so congratulations to you. Before we take our group picture, I'd also like to share with you that two of these wonderful staff people have been selected as the MCPS Teachers of the Year for 2015. Our elementary-level Teacher of the Year is Pam Cove from Round Elementary School. And our secondary-level Teacher of the Year is Erin Kimasinski from Osborne High School. Congratulations to all of you. I believe they all deserve a round of applause for the wonderful work they've done. You got it, everybody?
One, two, three, one more. One, two.
Thank you all, congratulations. All these pictures will be on the division's Facebook page and website in case you missed them. Before I go to my seat, our final recognition is a bittersweet one as we prepare to bid farewell to our awesome school board student liaisons. Ms. Anna Spall is here tonight, and I believe Ms. Sebeski would like to recognize both of them. I know Mr. Weeden is not here tonight, but they're getting ready to graduate from high school and move on. I think we have one more board meeting with them, possibly. But we're very excited about what they have brought to the table this year, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Sebeski.
Thank you, Ms. Rafford. Two years ago, Manassas City School Board chose to add student liaisons to our school board. It was an undertaking that some of our local school divisions do, but not a lot of them. We made this decision because our students are stakeholders in this community, and we wanted to hear their voice and their opinions. And we really weren't sure what we were undertaking, but we went forward. And Ms. Spall has had to forge through many learning curves that we've had to go through over the last two years as our student, one of our first student liaisons to the school board. She's done a fabulous job, offered us great input on many things that we just didn't see from a student's perspective, and helped us understand that student perspective. As we continue on, because as a board after that first year, we realized how important this input is to us as a board, we are very happy to be able to continue this. The leadership she has shown has had other students, more students each year step forward in the selection process and wanting to serve in this role. We consider it very valuable. We thank you for your leadership and your support, and I offer you this token of thank you from us as a board.
Thank you, Ms. Sebeski.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You can do whatever you want.
That's all I got right now.
You've only got one more meeting, so what can you do? You can't mess up too bad.
My, I won't be here at the next meeting as I have a family obligation. I don't miss too many meetings, but Mr. DiMaria felt like since this was an initiative that I had helped bring forward, that I got to be here tonight to do this, so I thank you too, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Board committee reports. Academics, Mr. Williams?
No report, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Policy, Ms. Sebeski?
No report.
Rolling. Education support, Ms. Albright?
We did have a meeting last week, sir. We had a significant result of that. It's a presentation that was added to the agenda tonight. Just of it is every year, children across America are injured or even worse as a result of drivers who just flagrantly disregard the stop arm of a school bus. We have the potential idea that we'll present this evening that could potentially improve safety for our students.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bushnell, finance?
Yes, the finance committee met earlier this evening. We saw an updated list of the proposed student fees and charges that we've approved for next year. We received updates on the five-year forecast CIP and budget, which will be addressed during motions later. Year-to-date report, including the estimated FY 2015 carryover, which we address in a motion later. And we also received a report that should please employees. We're going to change the way that we're deducting the 5% VRS contribution. When we originally started doing this, we had adopted it on a 12-month basis. We now will go to paying VRS the exact appropriate amount during the contract months instead of having it spread over 12 months. So that means that our 10-month, 11-month employees will have 10-month and 11-month deductions for VRS instead of the 12 that's been being done for everyone else. It's the way that the rest of the state is doing it. It was a new way for the state to do business. None of us knew quite what to do when it first came in. We now are adopting a slightly different methodology that should be better for our employees.
Thank you, sir. Anything from policy?
Personnel.
Personnel. I was a P-word.
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Board member comments. Ms. Purdy?
Okay. So, I'm gonna try to keep it short and sweet because there's a lot to cover tonight, but I am going to indulge a little bit. So first, I want to congratulate all of the recipients. There's just an awful lot of talent that was represented here tonight, and I want to say congratulations to our two new principals that are coming on board. I think you're joining a great team, and I think you'll be very pleased to be part of that team. So now, this is where I get to indulge myself. I want to talk about the robotics group a little bit. Probably the only ones who understand what those kids get out of the robotics club are the kids and the parents and the mentors that participate in it. And I will tell you, having been a judge for First Robotics for years and years and years, the least of what they learn is robotics. They actually learn a whole heck of a lot more. They learn how to do design work, they learn how to work in a team, they learn how to communicate, they learn how to plan. It is amazing to watch those kids before they've participated in the robotics team and then after they've participated in it. It is an incredible growing experience. And the other thing that I want to bring to the attention, Al mentioned it, but I kind of want to footstomp it, is these kids wouldn't have near the enhanced experience they have in the robotics club if it weren't for their mentors. Their mentors are coming from the community, they've done this sort of thing before, and they bring a lot of life lessons to these kids, real hands-on kind of stuff that these kids are going to carry with them to the rest of their lives. So I do want to personally thank all the mentors who participate in the robotics club. A lot of good work that was done. They forgot to tell you that this is a multifunctional robot. It also sells popcorn really, really well. We saw it at work at the Baldwin Movie Hut. It was a hit. Another thing, given that yesterday was Memorial Day, I particularly want to note the students that are joining the military. They probably don't know exactly what they're in for. I come from multiple generations of family. I've got a sibling, I've got a parent, I've got grandparents, and it keeps going further back, who have served in the military. And the kids, the students that are going into the military today, they're joining an environment of integrity and a culture of excellence. And no matter what they do, whether they choose to continue to serve in the military and provide protection that allows us to enjoy the quality of living that we do today, or if they get out and go on to other things, they are going to be touched by that experience in a way that is incredibly profound, and it's going to set them up for success in their future. So congratulations to those students. And then finally, I do want to personally thank Anna. I remember, you know, when you first got here, you were actually a little bit timid and shy, and I very personally quickly learned, when Anna speaks, I want to listen, because it was very rare when she said something that wasn't an incredibly profound insight. And as Pam alluded to, a lot of the things that she brought to our attention really made you stop and think, and I think it informed our decision-making for the better. So Anna, thank you for doing what you did for two years. I kind of understand where you get your penchant for serving, because I see your mom in the back, and she's one of those unsung heroes that does an awful lot for the community as well. So thank you both. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I too would like to congratulate everybody tonight. So many wonderful things going on and so many things to be proud of. Mrs. Purdy stole the popcorn thing from me, but yes, it was quite a feat to watch that robot, and he sold more popcorn than the people. So thank you for that. Welcome to our principals. Mr. Baldwin, it was very nice to talk to you a bit earlier today and look forward to seeing all the energy you have and all the great things you're about to do. Thank you too to Anna. I'm the newest one up here, and Anna, I learned from her just by sitting next to her, so thank you. And just coming off of Memorial Day, I just wanted to thank current, past, and future military for your service, as well as those who've given the ultimate sacrifice for our country. And lastly, SOLs are in action. I just want to wish the best of luck to our students and to the teachers who are sweating even more than them, I think. So good luck to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sebeski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to personally congratulate Mr. Baldwin and Ms. Buckhead, even though she's not here, on your latest appointments to our principalships here in the city of Manassas. I know they're going to do great things, and staff is, I'm sure, very excited to have them on board as we are. I would like to congratulate all the students that were recognized tonight for their great accomplishments, as well as the staff who helped them achieve these things, and the mentors-
mentors from our community that helped these things be successful. Without all of that, our students wouldn't have some of the opportunities that they do. I'd like to thank our students who have chosen to serve our great country. Without bright individuals like yourselves making this sacrifice and your families making this sacrifice, we wouldn't get to enjoy the freedoms that we get to enjoy in this country. So thank you, and I'll echo Ms. Kiefer's thoughts of Memorial Day. Those that have served past, present, and made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms is something I appreciate every single day. Anna, you know I have appreciated your input and enjoyed working with you and watching you grow, and I look forward to hearing all about your great accomplishments at Randolph-Macon. We wish you all the best, and I look forward to hearing about how that's going for you, and hopefully you feel like you've gained something from this experience here as well. And last, but certainly not least, I want to congratulate the Osborne High School class of 2015. As we will not meet again until after commencement exercises on June the 8th at Jiffy Lube Live, so congratulate all of those students over at Osborne. You do still have finals to finish, so keep up the great things that you're doing in your families and in our community as you go forth into other parts of the state and the world. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Mr. Baldwin, Ms. Buckhite. We look forward to working with you and to having you have a great presence in our schools. Congratulations to all the honorees this evening. What they do for our community is incredible. Congratulations to Anna. You know, thank you for everything you've done for us. We really appreciate it. And one thing we haven't mentioned, I think, is that congratulations especially to all the parents. In order for the community to be successful, we need great teachers, we need great staff members, we need great students. We need input from administrators, but we also need parents and grandparents and other relatives at home to help boost those students, because without all those people working together, we can't be successful. So I see a couple of parents here, the honorees, so thank you very much for what you've done. I know you're very proud, and we're proud of you and your students as well. So thank you very much. And that's all for me.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bushnell?
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to also welcome Mr. Baldwin and say that we're thrilled to have Mr. Baldwin and Ms. Buckhite joining us. We have a very good team in place. We are bringing in exceptional educational leaders to add to that team. We have very high expectations, and we're looking to the two of you to continue that record of success and to take us to even further in reaching excellence. And I would be remiss if I didn't say something about Anna. Two years ago, when we started this experiment to see what it was like if we had school board liaisons who were students, I wasn't quite sure how it would work out. I don't think any of us were quite sure what it would be like. I think that if you ask each of us individually, we would all say that this is a successful program. One of the reasons it's a success is because Anna Spall has been here for two years. She's dedicated two full years of her life to sitting up here in sometimes boring conditions to provide meaningful input to us. So she has provided the foundation of this program. It's a program that we will keep, I believe, for years to come, but one of the reasons we will keep it is because you have been a very successful pioneer on behalf of the other students at Osborne. So thank you very much for your meaningful contribution and for making this a success and for speaking up about things that we needed to know about, for asking questions that needed to be asked, and for doing it in a very good fashion. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't know why he thinks anything's boring. Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, sir. I'm not sure what hasn't been said, so I guess I'll try to be succinct. Absolutely sincere congratulations and welcome to our new principals, our service awardees, our teachers of the year, and of course, all the other students we've recognized. The accomplishments we've seen tonight, those you've seen in previous board meetings in the last couple of weeks, Williams Elementary School, the Grammy over at Osborne High School, all show why it's great and you can be successful living in the city of Manassas and having your children attend our schools. It's just too darn bad that our press in today's society only focuses on the negative. It was also really appropriate that we recognized our future veterans the day after we honored those who gave the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our country and our freedoms. As a veteran myself, the son of a veteran, I respect and appreciate the sacrifice and the service young men and women give when they enlist in the Army, the Navy, the Air Force, even the Marines. I'm an Army guy. And those who attend one of the academies, and we are really privileged in our city that over the years, we have had a large number of our children attend service academies and go on to further careers in the armed forces. On a lighter note, next week, there is VSBA. I'll be attending a board of directors meeting Thursday, and I continue to appreciate the support of all my peers up on this dais as we do that, and of course, there's a school law conference in Richmond on Friday.
Thank you, sir, and be sure that we appreciate all the work you do down there as well. Thank you, congratulations and welcome. What everybody else said, I don't need to go through that whole thing. Tomorrow, we are kicking off Footsteps to Brilliance. It's at 9 o'clock at the...
Harris Pavilion.
Skating rink. Harris Pavilion. 9 o'clock in May is very, very difficult for me. I'm going to do my very best to get there, but I can't promise anything, so I would like to say a couple of things tonight, just in case I don't get there tomorrow. I've thanked them several times, and it's getting old, but you know, Mr. Bushnell, thank you for bringing this forward to us. We hear the robotics team is spectacular. All of these things are spectacular. We're focusing on STEM and now STEAM, and in my opinion, it's got to be Steamer. Reading is the most important thing there is, and it seems like sometimes we forget about that with all of the other things. We've got to, you know, reform this and do this and do that. We need to read. Number one, if I remember from when I was a kid, I think reading is fundamental. Saw it on TV someplace. And Footsteps to Brilliance, hopefully, does that. It is so exciting to have this reading program coming forward for our pre- K, eventually three, third-grade students, that I can't tell you how excited I am that reading is going to be the center of this. We have kids that are coming to school that can't read, that can't speak English, and they need to get this head start, and hopefully, Footsteps to Brilliance is going to do that for us. So I'm very excited. I hope I can get there tomorrow, but I think chances are I can't, but I'm going to try. So I'd just like to thank everybody who's involved with that. To our school board daughter, as everybody else said, Anna, when you first started, you didn't say much. As we probably all were when we first started up here, we were rather nervous. And Mrs. Purdy is dead-on. When Anna opens her mouth, you better listen, because chances are, she's right. She didn't do it a whole lot. Each year, each meeting, each month, she did it more, but she became more involved, and when she did say something, she was right. And I appreciate what you have done for this program. If we'd have had somebody that wasn't as dedicated as you were for these first two years, you never know what might have happened to the program. So the program is going to continue, and I honestly believe it's thanks to you that it's going to go on. I won't be nice to you anymore. I might even call you out at graduation, but thank you very, very much. I really appreciate it, and I love seeing your growth over the last two years. Citizens' comments. Does anyone, I have no one signed up. Does anyone wish to speak? I have to read this then, just wait a second. "At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the city of Manassas public schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. Please treat citizen comments as a public..." We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing and do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please note that matters which are properly the subject of closed meetings, such as those related to the performance of school personnel or individual student concerns, may not be discussed during this time." Ma'am. Name and address, please. Oh, name and where you live. I think we know where you live.
It means you found me already. My name is Deborah Klinsner. I live at 10326 Sarajevo Court in Manassas. I have currently two children still in the school system and two who have graduated from it, and I have participated as much as possible in various volunteer things and also in the community sessions that the schools had for building of Mayfield and also Baldwin, among other things. I am here tonight because I want to express my concern over some of the things that I've heard, that I, that came up during the last community meeting, and also some things that I have at least heard from a neighbor who attended this Saturday with the superintendent, and kind of where this seems to be going. So I just kind of want to express a few concerns, particularly with the Baldwin Intermediate. I have to tell you, I was at the groundbreaking, and I am very, very glad, since my kids went to Baldwin, that this is finally happening. But I am a little bit concerned with the way that the breakdown is going between the elementary school portion and the intermediate school portion, mainly because it appears, at least from what I gathered at the community meeting, that the intermediate portion is going to be small enough that we are essentially going to be feeding four of the elementary schools into Mayfield and one into Baldwin. I do not feel that this is appropriate for our kids. It singles out those, that one school, from the experience of intermingling with the other students of their age group, and essentially puts them behind, both in social, essentially in social, but also somewhat probably in the availability of the academic as well, being separated out from the other four schools, essentially. I would like to see, when you do the redistricting, that you kind of perhaps make Baldwin Elementary a little smaller so that you can accommodate two schools and make it kind of three into Mayfield and two into Baldwin Elementary, or something of that nature, so that you can make it more equitable. So I would like you to look into that. I am also concerned with what I have at least heard concerning the possibility of the busing, which is to say that there may be, because of cost concerns, that the Baldwin Intermediate may be on the same buses as the elementary. I do not have a problem age-wise with this happening. You know, once upon a time, we used to be K through six anyway. What I have an issue with is the fact that the intermediate kids will have a different experience than that of the kids at Mayfield. If they're going later with the elementary kids, they're not going to be able to have the same extracurricular activities. And what I'm really afraid of is that you're going to end up having four schools where you have a K through four experience, and then they go on and they get that intermediate school experience where you have the chance to grow into very slowly the middle school experience, where you become more than just the elementary, but at a slower pace so that you can deal with it. And then you're going to have what is essentially a K through six school. And that is what I'm afraid of, that you're going to have two different experiences, and that will be detrimental for the kids who are left behind in the K through six. They will not have that same chance to grow. They will not have the opportunity to have the same sort of separation and such. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Does anyone else like to speak? Okay. When we got done with the awards and everything, a lot of people snuck out, which they always do. You guys didn't sneak out. Thank you very much. I know you wanted to stay because we're so interesting. And we love having guests. We really do. But I also want to give you the out. If you want to sneak out, you're more than welcome to, but personally, I'd rather have you stay, but nobody will look at you funny if you guys get up and walk out, because we are interesting. Oh, come on! Look at you guys.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Did you really have to tell them that?
Well, yeah, they don't, you know, they sat down front and they got caught up.
They're going to be soldiers. They're getting used to being bored.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, kids have work to do. I guess we're going to discussion Osborne High School World Language Resource Adoption.
Consent agenda.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Albrecht, could you...
Yes, Mr. Chair. The school board of the city of Manassas approved the consent agenda as modified.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Bushnell. Is there any discussion?
Discussion. Sir, I'd just like to disclose that under Section G of the consent agenda, ratification of personnel appointments, my wife, who's employed by the city, is subject to being re-employed, and that does in no way impair my judgment. I've signed a conflict of interest, as I know you have as well.
The same goes for me, not his wife, but my wife. Is there any other discussion? Motion by Mr. Albrecht, Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Bushnell, that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the consent agenda as modified. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry 7-0. Thank you for that, sir. Now, we will go to Osborne High School World Language Resource Adoption. Oh, we've got lots of help coming.
Good evening, Chairman DiMaria, Dr. McGorgick, and board members. I am here with Vicki Nolte, who is our World Language Department Chair at the high school. I almost wish we'd also helped the robot to do this presentation with us. We are very pleased to bring forward the recommendations for the World Language textbook adoption. In the next few slides, we're going to talk you through the process we went through and the recommendations that the committee made. As it has been over 10 years since the last World Language textbook adoption, the committee was very excited to meet and start the process. Our committee was formed, which consisted of central office staff, as well as world language staff and technical support. Several publishers were contacted for presentations or to provide us with a web-based presentation. As an important note, when we started this presentation on March 26, 2015, the Virginia Board of Education voted to discontinue the state-level review and recommendations of foreign language textbooks. So the World Language Department at the Virginia Department of Education would no longer be providing us with a list of approved materials as of March 26.
Is there a reason they did that? Do you know that you know of?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
So as we were going through the recommendation process, we wanted to make sure that we developed specific criteria that we were going to use as we evaluated each of the resources that were brought forward. Specifically, we wanted our materials to align with the new World Language standards of learning that were readopted in 2014. We really wanted the material to focus on student-centered learning and that it had a friendly layout of material so that students can access world cultures and learning world language much easier. And we were really interested in the digital resources that were available along with the resources, and we wanted to have interactive online resources, both for the students and the teachers. We did have presentations from the top four vendors. We also had vendors that provided us with an online webinar or information, and I have to say that a lot of our vendors had to cancel because of all the snow days that we had in January, February, and March, and Vicki worked like a champ to get them rescheduled. We did solicit feedback from the community, including our staff, parents, and community members. Interested parties could view the materials online via a link on the Osborne High School website, or they could review hard copies in the Osborne Library. And then the committee met to finalize selections for the new World Language resources. And these are the recommended World Language resources for adoption. You may be wondering why we didn't go with a certain publisher for all of our Spanish materials or a certain publisher for all of our French materials. The reason is, our vendors do have specific language categories that they cater to, so one publisher may only do Spanish 1 through 4. Another publisher may do Spanish 4 AP and Spanish 5 AP. So that's why you see different vendors for the different selections. Vicki, if you'd like to go ahead and talk through what we selected.
As you can see, Hoden Mifflin, the publisher...
As you can see, Hooten Mifflin, the publisher, Hooten Mifflin, is, is recommended for most of our French courses, most of our Spanish courses, and even our Spanish for native speaker courses. And all of those at, at least levels one through three. For French four and five, we are requesting an additional book from Vista Higher Learning called Imaginés. Our Latin program, our Latin teachers have been very happy with the choices, with the choice that they had made before, so they're going to continue requesting that, which is Latin for Americans. For Spanish four, we would like to go with one book by Hooten Mifflin, but to challenge our students even further, Pearson has a reader called Abriendo Paso and a wonderful workbook called En Marcha. And they're actually created by one of the contributors to the AP Spanish Language and Culture exam. For AP Spanish, again with Abriendo Paso Temas y Lecturas, it, the AP program was revised, the AP exam was revised two years ago into six units. And this particular reader has articles and fragments from literature consistent with those six units of, of the AP exam, as well as, and actual preparation for the AP exam. And the, as I said before, the Nuevas Bistas is a Hooten Mifflin book for the Spanish for native speakers. Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you.
I asked that Vicky do that because she has a wonderful accent when it comes to the names of the books that we.
It was flowing pretty good there.
Wasn't that wonderful?
Thank you.
So we welcome any questions from the board now on the textbook adoption process. And then Dr. Saunders will be presenting a follow-up as well.
Anybody have any questions yet? Sir?
Mr. Williams.
Oh, Mr. Williams, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I wanted to note that this was brought to, to the academics committee, and I really want to thank Ms. Nolte and all the staff and the teachers who put lots of time into this, because here's a synopsis of what they did, but they'd be very diligent and go through the different books and go through, work with us now. So thank you very much for the work and time you put into this. Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Just a minute, sir.
No, I do, yes. I assume at some point there'll be a cost implication because some of these are new textbooks and that'll come to us. But I don't know that I've ever seen us readopt a textbook where you said you're happy with the Latin textbook in this example, but I guess we would still have to buy some replacement textbooks and/or digital licenses.
Correct.
Okay.
Hannah? Ms. Spall? Sorry.
Where does Latin III fall under a book?
That's a very good question, Hannah. Latin III has been, is a hybrid course and it uses bits and pieces from various other places, including some from the Latin for Americans and other places as well. That's why there's not a really specific book for it. And, and in addition, just to let you know that only two of the, only two of the companies are actually publishing French books and only two of the companies are publishing Latin books. All four companies, of the major companies, have Spanish programs, but not the other languages as well. So there's kind of slim pickings for some of those.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Purdy?
I, I wasn't, wasn't clear on, you, you talked about that the, the books had applications and this is digital, with, so every single one of the selections actually has applications that the kids can use where it's more digital and more interactive versus, you know, paper.
The Latin program does not really have an online digital sources. It has like an additional program, a resource that goes along with the book. But neither of the two companies that do the Latin books have much of that to offer. But there is a Latin site and much of that site is, is, you know, looked toward by the Latin. And I think Dr. Saunders has some information about online and digital resources as well.
Thank you.
Everybody good?
A follow-up. So I guess your question for staff is next steps from here. I mean, this is in for discussion. Are we going to put these out for public comment? Are we going to come with a recommendation? Are we intending to get a procurement action? So we've got them for the start of school? And if so, that's a really short timeline, so where are we on a schedule?
Some of those questions. So some of the questions that you're bringing up are exactly the things that I'm, I'm going to talk a little bit about tonight.
I didn't read ahead.
It's, one of the things that we continue to talk about and really see changing in the work that we do is the curriculum or the resource adoption process, the textbook adoption process. We're in a time where everything is changing very, very fast. Textbook companies are not necessarily publishing hardback books any longer. We have free resources that are out there that teachers can access. There's open source resources that are available. And as you heard Megan speak about, there are changes in, in legislation that is kind of doing away with the way that we do, that we have traditionally done the textbook adoption process for many, many years. If you think back, we've done, you know, the, the traditional processes, the state will put out a list of these are the accepted resources that you can use. You adopt one, you use it for the next seven years and then you come back to it again. We are far from that. The schools of tomorrow will not be able to accommodate that because those resources and that information will be outdated before those seven years are up. And we just have a whole lot of opportunity to do things different. And so I'm here tonight to kind of share a little bit about where we look in the future and it does have an impact on the world languages. And so that's why this is sort of a tag on here to the end. So just quickly, where has, where have we been in the Commonwealth with the textbook adoption process? I talked a little bit about what our old process was and basically for seven years, you kept the same materials. The state said this, this is what you use and we adopted that. We adopted textbooks and came back around in seven years. In 2011, the Board of Education started to look at textbooks again and had conversations about that textbook approval process. Really, at that point, it was about making publishers accountable for including all the standards in those particular resources in the state and then reviewing them. In June of 2014, the Commonwealth awarded a contract, an RFP, to Copia Interactive to establish the Virginia Digital Textbook Marketplace and Resource Center. This was the first movement into something different for the resources that we can be looking forward to in the future. The digital marketplace began as, as a pilot. In, in January, they started the first pilot in the nation. And Manassas City was selected as one of the eight school divisions to participate in this pilot. Shortly after the announcement of the pilot of the digital marketplace, the Board of Education took action to discontinue the state-level review of the foreign language textbooks, really making our current need for foreign language digital textbooks a natural match for the digital marketplace pilots. They kind of go hand in hand. And you can see through conversations that this is probably the wave of the future as things are moving. So let's talk a little bit about what is the digital textbook marketplace. And the gentleman that explained some things to me, so there isn't many things out there today that you can't buy in segments. One of the things left that you can't buy in segments are textbooks. You have to buy the whole book. You get all the chapters. You get everything in that one package. And so there's a desire to look at how do we choose that segmented opportunity? How do we select a chapter from this particular text? A chapter from this particular text that meets our students' needs and meets the standards? So the digital market textbook marketplace is a cloud-based digital learning platform that powers the Virginia Digital Textbook Marketplace. The platform delivers high-quality, standards-aligned content from major publishers, some of the major publishers that you saw up on the screen as the recommendations, from those secondary publishers and from even small entrepreneurial content providers. So it's really blending the large scale all the way down to the small, small scale. And they're all searchable from a single portal. The digital textbook marketplace is far more than a delivery platform for digital textbooks and supplementary, supplementary content. It does an overlay so that the textbooks become interactive, that the teachers can add pieces into the text, that they can begin to ask questions and do formative assessments within those textbooks and to really use those as instructional resources. There's a lot of features that come along with that, that make that textbook come alive in a digital way rather than the paper textbook. At the same time, it will enable divisions to refine their purchasing process and practices to buy only those things that are used consistently and effectively in the classrooms and to start to look at not having those long-term commitments that limit our progress. So as time changes and as information changes very quickly, we will no longer have to be part of that seven-year process. We'll be able to adapt quickly to the needs of our students. So Copia Class is the, is a company that Virginia is working with. It is the Virginia Digital, Digital Marketplace. And a little bit about the, about this particular concept through Copia. Copia allows teachers to choose pieces of several different textbooks or other resources and assign these to his or her class, within groups, within classes or within individual students. It allows them to level texts as appropriate, same content, just different level of reading ability. It allows teachers to add in class discussions, quizzes and activities within the text materials themselves and to push those out to their students through the platform. It allows teachers to communicate questions, thoughts, ideas between and among teachers and among students. It allows teachers to differentiate the instruction through the use of different levels and styles of presentation. And allows teachers to track student usage and achievement through the data collected by a system in order to make modifications in their teaching. The interface for students and teachers and the division personnel are all device-agnostic. The system stores student work on their own space in the cloud and students can work both online and offline, so materials available whether they have the internet access or not. So what are our next steps? As you heard, the world language teachers, these two things kind of have merged together. Our participation in Copia as well as the recommendation for the materials that the world language teachers have spent so much time pushing forward. So at this time, we've started our communication with representative from Copia based on, and based on sharing the recommendations from the world language teachers that we presented to you tonight for consideration. The majority of the recommended resources are available through Copia. Hooten Mifflin is one of their large publishers that they do have with them. They also have the Vista Higher Learning. They also have the particular Latin pieces that are on here. The ones they do not have a partnership with as of yet is Pearson and some of the other larger ones, but they are working. They're adding partners every day and we've sent them our information so they're out there trying to work with adding those partners to their list so that they can participate in this as well. One of the other things that Copia provides is what they call Copia Classics, which are books and materials that are free to use, that no longer have copyright. And so they're out there and available for our students as well. So our first step is to start to look at how do we integrate the use of Copia in this world language adoption? Where does it make sense? Where does it meet the needs that the teachers brought forward? And how do we take advantage of that digital content where, where it makes sense? Second, we need to take a good look at the, at revising our processes, procedures, policies around adoption of textbooks. We learned through the USVA process, we were looking at the USVA history process and we learned that our rubrics maybe aren't designated and appropriate for looking really at digital resources. You know, we're still looking at things as we did traditionally seven years at a time. And so we need to spend some time really looking at how do we effectively evaluate the resources that are out there and that we are most effective with what, with what we choose. And finally, we have to take a look at our current resources. There are many things available through Copia that we're currently using, that we might be reordering textbooks or we might be reordering things that we can have an opportunity to add those to our opportunities with Copia. One of them is the APUSH class at the high school. There's a new AP textbook that they're considering and they can receive that on Copia as well. So there, there are resources that we're currently using that we could probably be more effective. An exciting opportunity when we think about participating in this is that we've talked about ways that we can move the blended learning and the digital learning down into the middle school and even further. This is one way that we can do that. Our world languages start in the eighth grade, so the Level Ones are available to our eighth grade students. We expect that we'll have digital devices in those classrooms next year so those students can participate at a very, a little bit earlier than the high school in that whole process of becoming really a digital learner and preparing our students. So we have some work to do, but the information is there. We're still very early in the conversations with Copia as far as the costs and what pieces they're offering, but we wanted to make sure that the world language resource adoption was brought before you for the recommendations and that you have some information about what is, what is out there for us to look at.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Bushnell?
So you've made the presentation to us. When do we see the budget impact? Is it for next year's budget you would be coming to us to buy the books that you're selecting now? When, when does that happen?
As soon as we have the final cost from, from the different vendors. We have, we have the, the cost that the world language staff went through for the actual textbooks or the hard, hardback pieces or the, or the digital pieces that they would have to provide through that. So we need to identify which of those is a better use of our resources. In the initial conversation with Copia, there is a reduction in the, in the student cost per student to participate in this because we're part of the pilot. The, the amount that they indicated to me was $10 per student to participate, so that would be $10 for each of the world language students that were part of that process. We've given our numbers to them as far as the enrollment in those different courses that they have available with those and we're waiting to get the finalized version of what that's going to cost us.
But is there anything in our next year's budget for this adoption?
Yes, yes. We had world language textbooks already in the adoption process.
So there's a placeholder there for some amount?
Yes.
It would sound to me like if the process is being changed, we might hopefully get to that wonderful place where every year, as texts are changing digitally, we're, we have an annual cost instead of these major every seven-year adoptions, which sounds like it would be really good if other textbooks headed in this direction. Do you get any sense that they are?
I do. I mean, the conversations, the last time I spoke with the gentleman, Hooten Mifflin was not part of the digital marketplace and within the last two weeks, three weeks, they have become part of it. I believe that the conversations are happening with the textbook companies and how they can benefit from becoming part of this as opposed to schools going out and using the traditional process. So it's a, it's an interesting time and how, how those resources are starting to balance. I would agree that we have a great opportunity through a marketplace like this, which is what I think the state sees, that we can continually refurbish our resources annually and that we have the most current, most appropriate resources for our students as opposed to a process that takes us a long period of time and keeps us with the same resource that maybe isn't necessarily as effective.
But based on your research and based on the work of staff, the placeholder we have appears to be sufficient to meet the need for the various textbooks that have been identified?
Yes, it does.
Is there anyone else? Ms. Purdy doesn't hide here.
So you talked about participating in the Copia pilot. So is, is that something that is a commitment over the long haul? How does that work? So on annual basis? Because if you're, if I understand what you were telling is when you participate in the, the digital marketplace, that is your marketplace. And what is available in the market, that's what you have access to, to Copia. So you would rely solely on that or would you look for other places? And is there any kind of like, well, if you buy from us, you can't buy from them or?
Not that, not, not that I'm aware of for that. This, the, the conversations that I've had with Copia at this point is that they're trying to launch it in association with the, with the world languages adoptions that they expect coming from many of the school divisions because there haven't been any. So it's what matches our need. And that's really, I think, what has worked well with this process is that the teachers really did go through, what do they need? What are the best resources for them? And then we're going to try to match what's available through this with. through this with that, rather than say, "This is the only thing that we have available, teachers. You have to fit into it." So I think this is a good place to start to look at where does it fit. We're not committed to anything, any particular numbers. You know, we sent, these are our numbers as we expect for these particular courses that you have available. But I can imagine that this will continue to grow. They seem to continue to grow daily in what was, in the content that's provided within there.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do.
Mr. Albrecht?
Who's making sure I'm calibrating up straight? So we're one of eight school divisions in the Commonwealth that's a pilot for Copia specifically for World Language?
We can use anything with it.
Understand. But I assume all of the eight, everybody, all eight are looking at World Languages because that's what's up? Or they're looking at everything?
They're looking at everything.
Is anybody else looking at just at World Language of the eight?
I don't know for sure. I'd have to find out specifically.
And I'd be curious if any of them, because your recommendation criteria said electronic media should be available, but it didn't say Copia. And I wonder if you said they have to have Copia, if that would change the recommendation. Were they so closely together, that criteria, because there's a trade space right there from a business perspective of making the big guys comply with where we're trying to go. And I was just wondering if anybody's looking at, within a English, math, language, whatever it might be, their criteria is 100% available on Copia and what that does? Because then you're getting into a different space.
Yeah, I wouldn't know specifically for each of the, each of the school divisions, but that's information that we can get from the discussion.
I guess the gist I'd be curious of is, does availability in Copia change the results? Because we're going, you're presenting a hybrid solution when in fact the state's looking to say, "We're trying to give you something." And they're not trying to give us a hybrid. They're trying to say, "Here it is." So we're not really helping them as a pilot get to where they're trying to go.
Now, can I add something? The state superintendent recommended the school systems based on what they were doing in technology, as well as looking at the diversity of their students. So that was one of the reasons why we were asked if we would be willing to participate. We can buy one book or two books through Copia and buy the rest with other companies. It's a place that we can go to for choice. Sometimes, the really great part about that is that sometimes when you purchase a complete textbook, in today's world, it's based on common core, this will allow us to look at chapters or units in different books and pull them to more closely align with the Virginia standards.
I get it, in the segments.
Right. And so in this piece, we're just looking for specific books right now within Copia and giving that a look, see. At the same time, we're still, we still have Pearson, for which we're doing online content with them as well.
I guess.
And then finally, once we have, for all board members, once we, we're in this end of the year trying to move, to provide information so that we can come for approval of this. So since we don't have costs, what I wanted to do was bring this forward, so you have this presentation with time to think about it. And when we have the costs, we'll bring that back as an action item for you to consider at that time.
I guess the reason I was making my comments and my fear, looking at the way politicians have treated education for the last 20 years, what's going to happen is they're going to say, "We gave you Copia. You choose not to use it. You're 100% responsible for the cost of those textbooks then."
Oh. That hasn't been...
I bet that's where the General Assembly and the State Board would take it. And they'd change the funding formula based on it at some point in the future.
That hasn't been any of the conversation.
No, they don't think like that. But trust me, somebody up down at Richmond is.
If they weren't there now.
Way to go, Mr. Albrecht. Any other questions or comments? Good?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, finance, carryover fiscal year 2015 appropriations.
Isn't the calendar in before?
Calendar's next, and then carryover has been moved to action.
Okay, this moved to action. All right.
It's calendar, Mr. Lyon.
Good evening. Chairman of the Senate, Honorable Members of the Board, that tonight's standing for you with the action item for this 1617 school year. The calendar having in front of you did have one clerical correction made in the month of December, January, in the narrative section. The date was off by days. I've corrected that for January, the winter breaks in December and January. So those are the only corrections to the calendar since you've last seen them.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the 201617 school calendar as presented.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Williams, uh, by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the 201617 school board, our school calendar as presented. Discussion. I assume that everybody got the comments we were forwarded by Mr. Lyon. I think, I don't know, do we, were those anonymous? I mean, they were anonymous to us. Are they anonymous to you?
Most of them had names attached to them.
Okay. To me, it looked like most of their concerns were explainable.
Yes.
If I read them correctly. I would like us to get back to them and explain why they are, or address their concerns. Some of them were valid, but I think if they understood what was going on a little bit better, they may not have those concerns. Did anybody else have any discussion on this or questions?
I think your observation's correct. There was a, it wasn't a 50-50 split. It was a very disproportionate share of people saying, "This isn't the best idea in the world," some of which I think is tied to perception and potentially the way we have explained it. Other parts because I can't go away Labor Day. We only have but so many days to get education in for the students. Everything we've done, everything we've been lobbying for for many years has let us try to go to school before Labor Day because everybody else in the country does, because the date windows you have for SOL testing are constrained to here. I mean, the point about there'll be no teaching going on, well, yeah, let's face it, the first day or two, everybody's getting used to where their chair is and what's going on. So we're going to get that done before Labor Day, so when the kids come back, they're going to be actually doing some real learning. So I think there is an education process we're going to have to go through, but addressing those to those constituents would be a good idea.
If you got their names, I would like them to be addressed so that they understand that we do hear them, and we want to know, want them to know that we are concerned as they are.
And I don't think Mr. Albrecht meant to say that we won't be doing any education until after Labor Day. I don't think he meant to say people could not come till Labor Day.
That's true, yes.
Education will be taking place prior to Labor Day.
Don't feel bad. They catch me on all that stuff I say, too.
Mr. Chair, I would like to echo some of that. You know, our students at the high school that take any AP tests, those are national tests that are scheduled second week of May. They're national because so many school divisions across our nation go to school very differently than what our schedule has been. There was a lot put into this calendar. I'm not sure how many people realize how much we have students that have shared services with Prince Win County that are greatly affected when our calendar becomes dramatically different from theirs. We're a small school division that we do have some of those shared services. And that Manassas Park also changed their calendar. It's not just us. So I would also like for the individuals that responded, and a lot of your presentation the last time did answer a lot of those questions, but maybe they weren't able to see that presentation, or it was presented very differently to them from whatever source, but they did see it. So I don't know how we can know that those people will get responses, but I would like for those people to understand that their concerns were heard, and that we didn't ignore them, but that education does have to come first. And education will start the very first day of school, as it has every other year, prior to this year, and next year, and every year after that. Because the expectations and the standards are so high, our students need every moment of every day, and as do our teachers, to make education at the level that is expected in the city. So I appreciate you taking care of that for us.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a motion from Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the 201617 calendar as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0.
Thank you, sir. We move to the action, and, oh, that was action. We'll move to finance. Are we going to the budget?
Yes.
Adoption budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move the School Board of the City of Manassas approved Resolution R 2015-09, adopting the FY 2016 budget in the amount of $111,312,006.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved Resolution R 2015-09, adopting the fiscal year 2016 budget in the amount of $111,312,006. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to address the difference between this amount and our earlier budget amount. We earlier had approved a budget in the amount of $110,783,544. The City Council approved a different amount. We would like for the amount that is appropriated and the amount that is in our budget for the School Board budget to be the same as in the amount of the City Council's budget for the School Board budget.
Any good idea?
We were concerned that if we didn't change our budget, we would have a budget that was less than the amount that Council had approved for us. It could be addressed in the amount that goes into reserve fund, but we felt that it was best for the city and for transparency purposes that there be one amount for the School Board budget, and we all agree what that is. And this would sync those up. In addition, the Finance Committee is concerned about somehow designating the amount of dollars that were added to the budget by Council when Council increased their budget for us. We'd already done the work on our budget. We'd already done the work on what we were funding. After the budget process, Council decided that they needed to address a need for additional funding on the city side, and that they wanted us to benefit from that. I think we would be remiss if we added that money to our operating fund in any way, shape, or form. I think that we should designate that that money is assigned for some kind of future undesignated infrastructure need. I think that the intent was for the city to address infrastructure needs with that money. I'm not sure how the Board wants to identify the use of these additional funds, but we need to put them in some way, shape, or form, I believe, as a reserve or contingency or something.
I agree. I'd like to see them just in contingency for the time being. I don't know that we want to make a decision on where we put them right now.
I'd be comfortable in having it go into contingency now, but I think the Board needs to be aware that we might want to have discussion at some point about these dollars. I think they are there for a purpose. They may not always be there, but I think it would be a mistake for us to add them to our operating dollars and go out and spin them toward operations.
More than likely, I'm not ready to agree 100% on that, but I'm also not disagreeing. That's why I'd like to put them in contingency right now and see where we'd go from there.
The motion addresses only the total amount of the budget resolution. I would suggest that we ask staff to take the additional funds and put them in contingency until we take some other formal action.
Absolutely. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair? Yes. I really liked the recommendation from Mr. Bushnell. This, in essence, amounts to kind of a plus-up from what we thought we were going to have because of the tax revenue. There's an additional tax that was increased because of the sharing agreement. That means some additional revenue is coming forward as a result of that. It's a little over $500,000. We haven't had any discussion of what to do with that plus-up. And so having an action to address that later is absolutely, I think, the right thing to do. And so, from a procedural perspective, I don't know if we have to do it as an amendment, but let's just put a date on it so that it doesn't kind of get lost in the shuffle, because there's a lot of things that are going to be coming up at the end, before September 1st or the end of September. I don't recall. We are going to have that joint financial discussion between us and the city. I could see how this could kind of get lost. And so I think it would be helpful for us to give ourselves a date for determining how to use that $527,000. But I agree, we've already gone through and we've set a level of service that has been resourced by the budget that was originally passed by this body. I think that level of resourcing is adequate for the services that we're going to provide. So having diligent consideration of what to do with this additional, in essence, half a million is a prudent course of action. And let's just put a date with it.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I would agree with Mrs. Purdy that I think just to keep us in check that we come up with some type of date, have a discussion, I think that we needed to have some type of budget work session, or I'm sure we'll have work sessions coming up that we could add that in to, to come up with anything. The budget does adequately meet the bare needs of the school division. If we all can recall, the superintendent did have $9 million in identified needs in the school division that were not able to be able to be met whenever she was doing her zero-based budgeting process. So there may be things that we're not aware of, and so I agree with that. I don't want to just blindly put it to something without having good discussion and time for staff to really look and see where the need might be.
Could I respond to that, though?
Sir?
In the five-year plan that comes back to us from the city, the increased taxes are only in the first year of that plan. And so it could pose major difficulties for us if we used the dollars in the first year to pay for operational needs and created a gap in funding in the second year if the city didn't take forward this increase in taxation.
I agree.
That's my worry about using it for any kind of operational need, is that once we commit to something from an operational standpoint, I think we believe that it's going to be there in an ongoing fashion. We don't fund teachers, or classrooms, or programs this year and anticipate they're going to go away. So I hesitate to create any expectation that funds exist for a program that we then have to go back and find half a million dollars later. That's why...
I agree that we don't want to do anything that's a reoccurring cost, but I don't know about you, but I don't remember what was originally looked at or requested by the different schools that may be different. I'm just saying, I think that before we just say that it needs to be for one thing or another, we really do need a work session where we can truly identify what that could most beneficially be for the system.
Well, we know, we know already that there are infrastructural needs for the city, that the schools have infrastructural needs that may not be addressed going forward by changes in the long-range CIP. So we know that we have needs for the ball fields, softball, baseball fields, and we know that we have needs future for Dean. I would suggest that we ask staff to, we approve the resolution, we ask staff to put the additional funds in a, in the, what did we say, contingency fund, and that then staff come back to us prior to September with a recommendation of how we address those funds in the future. in the future. Does that give you sufficient time, Secretary?
That works for me. Is that...
Is that good for you, too?
I think it addresses the need.
Okay. Any other discussion?
For transparency, and so folks understand, we will have a modified School Board budget, revised adopted School Board budget. It's now consistent with the revenue forecast from the city that they passed a week or two ago with City Council Resolution 2015-39. So...
Okay. It's good to be consistent?
Right. To the maker of the motion, do you want that additional, putting the delta into contingency in the motion?
I think we...
It's the intent within the discussion.
I think the resolution addresses the total amount of the budget. We are then agreeing to give staff input that says, having that extra money in the budget, we want it to go into contingency. That's not part of the resolution that we need to pass back to City Council.
Fair enough.
All right. And one other thing I'd like to make clear on this, that these additional funds are from a two cents tax increase that the City Council approved. Part of this problem also is the two and a half cents negative revenue line that the city took out to fund the jails. All of this is a part of try to get as close to adhering to the revenue-sharing agreement as they could. I've said this in other public meetings, I don't know that they ever could get to that point. But this is their attempt to get closer. They still didn't make it, and that's why we're going to meet with them sometime. We're going to have to discuss this as well, who's available when. I believe they made a motion to do it before the beginning of September, if I remember correctly. Is that what it was, sir? So, we're going to have to have some sort of a special meeting sometime, probably in August, and I'll get Carrie to get dates that as many of us are available as possible this time of the year. I firmly believe that it's a stretch to think that all seven of us will be there, but that's the sort of meeting they proposed. They did not propose a committee meetings. They proposed a joint meeting between the two of us.
And if anyone in the City of Manassas believes that 14 elected officials are going to get together in one night and agree to a plan that will rectify this...
Anything.
I have some bridges I'd like to sell you in the City of Bricklin or elsewhere. It seems to me that the best way for us to, and I would suggest you might mention this to the mayor, is that there might be some working group that gets together to prep for the joint meeting of all of the full bodies, because a joint meeting of the full bodies is going to do nothing more than posture and pontificate. It will not take action in any meaningful or significant way for the citizens of this city.
You're absolutely right. But they made the motion, so we still have to have the meeting, but you're right. Prior to that, it would be nice to go and release some information.
I'm suggesting we get back to them with a counterproposal on whether we might do this in a better fashion.
Right. Well, we could still meet their...
We can, but I think it would be nice if we had some committee work in the months of the summer before this September meeting.
Right. Before this, before September meeting. Before September is when they decided they wanted to meet as a full body, is what they made the motion, seconded and voted on it unanimously. Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion from Mr. Bushnell, second from Mr. Albrecht, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved Resolution R. 2015-09, adopting the fiscal year 2016 budget in the amount of $111,312,06. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Carry seven zero. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved Resolution R. 2015-10, adopting the FY 2016-2020 Capital Improvement Plan totaling $63,534,000 and the updated five-year forecast.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved Resolution 2015-10, adopting the fiscal year 2016-2020 Capital Improvement Plan totaling $63,534,000 and the updated five-year forecast. Is there any discussion?
I think...
I have a question, Mr. Chair. And I apologize, Mr. Bushnell and Mr. Albrecht, I noticed the answer. The CIP that we have approved, when the city manager did his budget, he did it differently than the way our CIP had been originally approved back in December. How does that reflect upon what we're approving tonight?
I believe this is the same one we have done, the way it was supposed to be done, with the agreements we've had.
Thank you.
So, this is the one that was adopted back in March?
Correct.
That's what you're saying?
December.
Did we adopt it in March?
December, I thought, yeah.
Was it December?
I thought we did it in December.
The last one we had...
This is the one that incorporates the changes that we had to make with the Gillum ball fields, as well as with the demolition of Baldwin.
This does not change any of the definitions that we have agreed to as part of the joint operating CIP.
That's...
Those have not been amended by us because we agreed to them previously and have agreed to them in a contractual commitment, adopting the earlier CIP. We have not changed or amended any of those notions.
Correct.
Thank you for that. That's what I was asking. Thank you very much for your clarification.
Discussion.
Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved Resolution R. 2015-10, adopting the fiscal year 2016-2020 CIP totaling $63,534,000 and the updated five-year forecast. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Mrs. Purdy? Carry six one, with Mrs. Purdy dissenting.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I move the School Board of the City of Manassas waived second reading and approved Resolution R. 2015-11, requesting that the City Council approve the carryover of up to $2,644,171 of FY 2015 operating and food service fund appropriations for expenditure in FY 2016.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the School Board of the City of Manassas waived second reading and approved Resolution R. 2015-11, requesting that the City Council approve the carryover of up to $2,644,171 of fiscal year 2015 operating and food service fund appropriations for expenditure in fiscal year 2016.
Is there discussion?
Okay, I have a question. With respect to the resolution, do we need a separate resolution to carry over the CIP bond fund?
I had asked Mr. Hudson earlier if this addressed all of our needs, and you had indicated it did. Do we need a separate motion?
No, we don't need a separate motion. They are already, they are magically carryover each year by city ordinance.
Okay, so the remaining Baldwin money doesn't act, okay. Because it does say operating in food, and it was excluded. Perfect. I just want to be clear.
Anyone else? Okay.
We have a motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mr. Albrecht, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approves, City of Manassas waived second reading and approved Resolution R. 2015-11, requesting the City Council approve the carryover of up to $2,644,171 of fiscal year 2015 operating and food service fund appropriations for expenditure in fiscal year 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Carry seven zero.
And bus stop arm, did we do that now?
Yes.
Bus stop arm enforcement camera system.
It's at the bottom.
Tonight, we are going to introduce a concept of installing a stop-arm enforcement camera system onto our school buses. This relates to goal number three of our strategic plan, which is to establish a safe and healthy environment for our students, staff, and community. To implement the use of an automated stop-arm enforcement camera in order to create a deterrent for motorists who illegally pass school buses while students are loading and unloading as a means to increase student safety. According to the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration, approximately a dozen children under the age of 19 are killed annually as pedestrians getting on and off of school buses. There have been 1,386 deaths have occurred since statistics have been capped with 40% of those coming from motorists who are illegally passing school buses. One half of all school-aged pedestrians killed while loading and unloading buses are between the ages of five and seven years old. We looked at, we conducted a study last school year to determine how it is locally, and we talk about all these national statistics. You can see that we ran a study last year, during last school year, September 2013 to June 2014, and we had cameras on two school buses. During that period of time, we had almost 500 violations and approximately 1.9 violations per day, per bus. So, the national average is 47 passes per day, per bus, and our violation rate is approximately 2.6 times higher than the national average.
Sir, if I might, do we have any reason for that? I mean, it's one thing to be higher than the national average, but 2.6, is there any rhyme or reason why we're that high?
I'm not sure.
Okay, because I can't...
Stop.
I know, but I mean, is it because we're a city and, you know, the rural jurisdictions in this country are zero, and so we're...
Well, I'll just give you an example. I came from Chesterfield County. It was a very, very, very rural suburb of Richmond. Their pass rate, we show it being point, is two violations per day, per bus. When we did it down there, theirs were over six. So, I mean, it was significantly higher. This is a significant problem, not only in this jurisdiction, but statewide and nationally that needs to be addressed.
Thank you, sir.
So, in front of you now is the Virginia statute, 46.2-844, which is giving the locality the permission to establish putting stop-arm camera systems on school buses. And they call it a video managing system. So, we will have, one of the ways that we do this is that we're going to get approval of a concept from the School Board, and then we will ask for an ordinance to be passed by City Council to give us approval to do it. We'll get into details in a few minutes. Some of the other localities throughout the Commonwealth that are looking at implementing the stop-arm camera program, several counties, including our neighbors in Falls Church and Arlington County, have already approved and instituted the stop-arm camera system. There are a number of counties throughout the Commonwealth that are in the final stages of it. I have done his being pilot programs, but I know Charlottesville City, Fairfax are ones that would be approving. They're out now soliciting vendors to create this program in their, in their localities. So, how does it work? You know, there will be cameras mounted onto the side of the school bus, and they will take a video as, is not activated by the bus driver at all. So, when the bus, when the stop-arm comes out, there will be a sensor. If it senses that a car is passing the school bus with the stop-arm camera out, it will take an actual video of the vehicle and the incident as it occurs. So, the process, the vendor will provide the automated enforcement system that requires no bus driver involvement. High-resolution cameras will be installed on the exterior of the bus to automatically capture images as the video of violating vehicles as they illegally pass the stop-arm. The system automatically embeds the data, a databank which includes GPS coordinates, date and time of the violation, and other relevant information used to create a comprehensive evidence package. After the system captures the full violation package, it automatically sends the violation data to the vendor's remote back office via a secure private cellular network for review and processing. A final review of the violation image and video is conducted by the Manassas City Police Department personnel, who then may approve or reject the violation. If the violation is approved, a citation is issued and mailed to the vehicle owner, and payment and collection, and court support are also included as part of the program's complete end-to-end solution. So, on the next screen, you'll see where, this is what actually the police see. They'll get this for each violation. They will have to hit accept or reject. If they hit accept, then the citation will be submitted to the registered vehicle owner. It takes about 30 seconds, less than 30 seconds, for them to review the violation. And when the citation is issued, this is what the citation will look like, will be received by the citizen, and they will be able to click on the website up to the right-hand corner. You can see it in blue, and actually see their car pass or passes. They can actually view the violation themselves. So, this is, after, they can go to this, once they click on that site, it will take them to this, this screen, and you can see where it'll say, pay the ticket, view the violation, dispute the ticket, review, have some frequently asked questions that you provide answers to. So, this is the screen that will help them look at what they've done, or where their vehicle has passed, the violation, and if they wish to pay the ticket, then they can pay it there for, you know, MasterCard, Visa, and if they, but if they also wish to dispute the ticket, they can dispute it at that time. It, if you want to know, they're very, in Virginia, there are very few people, the experience that Falls Church has had, is there have been very few people that have disputed the violation and actually went to court. There's approximately an 80% payment rate in Virginia, and so if a taxpayer, if a citizen refuses to pay the fee, or doesn't pay the fee, then it will go to a civil collection agency. It's sort of like having a parking ticket. There will be no points or anything put against your driver's license for this citation. These, the vendor will have a professional multilingual customer service agents that will be able to help the citizens if they want to call in and ask questions about their ticket. It's a 24/7 interactive voice response system, and they're open Monday through Friday for 12 hours, 8 a.m. to 8 p.m. every day. It's important that they have 170 different spoken languages that they support. There is no cost of any kind at any time to Manassas City Public Schools, no matter how few or how few citations are generated. Our number one goal here is student safety. Our number one goal here is student safety, and we hope that this will be a deterrent. And if Manassas City is like the experience we have seen in other localities, we should see a significant reduction in the number of citizens who are running past stop-arm buses with the red lights flashing with the stop-arm out. So, for each ticket or each citation, there is a $250 file. And on the screen, we have a revenue model which shows the violations per day, per bus. Ours is approximately two violations per day, per bus. You go down, so we would have them on, the initial point would be that we would have them on cameras on 10 school buses, so that would be 20 violations per day, per bus. We would have 360 violations a month, violations per school year would be 3,600, since we're having 10 months on the period of time. You have your paid violations of 2,520. That's based on, you see there at the bottom where we have a payment rate of a 70%. I think that's a very conservative number. I think the number would, the payment rate would be higher than that, and the vendor will be able to tell you that in Virginia, that it's been 80% or better. So, at the end, the total annual revenue would be approximately $630,000, with at the first year, the vendor's share being three-quarters of that amount, and the school division getting the other quarter. And each year, you will see that our goal is to have the violations per day, per bus to decline each year. So, by year five, we would be well below the national average. And we would hope that we would be able to use some of these funds for, to not to be operational in nature, but to help us to be able to provide more increased safety at our, for our school buses and at our schools. One of the things that we need to do first is to make sure that we have a very aggressive public awareness and communication plan outreach program. And our public communications office will work with the Transportation Department and the vendor to deliver strategic messaging regarding the campaign. We're going to use, of course, social media, Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube, Division website presence, news releases, school newsletters. We also got to be able to have notifications put in every citizen's utility that will be sent out to them during the summer months, during July and August. But the vendor will also come down and provide public awareness and community outreach. They'll do, they will do a commercial, they'll provide brochures, they provide kindergarten-type or first grade types of books that they will pass out to the students. They have a broader way of public awareness programs that, what I was trying to say is a public service announcement, they will prepare with the superintendent, the chief of police, and others that will be in the video, and to try to make the taxpayers aware, the citizens of this community aware that this will be a liability. So, when will it be, what is our hope, our timeline for implementation? Well, you can see that we've done some research during last school year, and we've been working with the Manassas City Police Department and the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, and they have been very supportive of our plan. We've interviewed and identified a vendor, and we contacted Falls Church City Police Department and the schools to determine how the vendor that they use has, what their experience has been, how did it go through with the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, how did the judges react, or what was their experience with this new system. And now, last Thursday night, we presented it in front of the Educational Support Committee. Tonight, we're here in front of the school board, and we hope to be able to send a, as soon as we receive school board approval, we'll send a sample draft ordinance to the city attorney. And then we, hopefully, we will receive the approval of the ordinance from City Council during the month of June, and then starting July, we will enter into a contract with the vendor, and then we will begin with earnest of having a public awareness outreach program during the summer, July and August of this year, 2015. And then we'll have the stop-arm camera system fully implemented and operational by the first day of school this year. Initially, we talked about, we are discussing having these cameras on 10 buses. We can do more if that would be the will of the, will of the board. The vendor will put 20, 30 on school buses, but we need to, now, you need to know that these cameras can be moved from school bus to school bus. Not all of our buses throughout the entire city are passed illegally every day. I can give you a few statistics about that. So, every year, the Transportation Department participates in a national study of how many passes are on per school bus. So, in March to 20 of 2013, we had, we had 59 buses in the fleet. We had 100 violations on that one day in March 2000, March to 202013. We had 47 buses had two or more violations. May 7, 2014, we had 47 school buses. We had 92 violations on those 47 school buses. 39 of the buses had two or more violations. This year, we had 51 buses out, or 51 routes. 27 of the buses, 27 out of 51 did not have any recorded illegal passing, but 24 buses had a total of 70 illegal passing on, of those 51 buses. So, of those 51 routes, 24 buses had 70 illegal passes.
I don't...
Mr. Chair, I move the school board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve the stop-arm enforcement camera system implementation as presented.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bushnell.
Well, the chairman of the committee that...
Thank you. I appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
I heard him first.
I know. Mr. Hawkins presented. He's our finance director. I want to emphasize, this is not about revenue. This is about student safety. Hopefully, when someone gets this letter in the mail, they'll realize they're doing something wrong, because the kind of numbers we're talking about, I've got to believe, are repeat offenders of people who potentially aren't aware of the law. I mean, I probably stop when I don't have to stop. I look at people when I'm stopped, they keep on going, thinking, what are you thinking? For a couple of years, I served on the Virginia School Insurance Board of Directors, and I can tell you, every quarterly meeting, we looked at accidents across the Commonwealth. Every single time, there were students hit by drivers who violated stop-arm enforcement cameras. I mean, they're there for a reason, and people don't pay attention, and yes, it's happened in the city. I'm not saying this is going to save a life, but the statistics are there that by doing something like this, we have the significant potential to improve student safety, and that's what this is about.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bushnell.
I accept that as the starting premise, but I wonder if we're going far enough. If we know factually that 24 buses have multiple violations, why would we ever only put the cameras on 10 buses? If we know to start with, it's 24 this year, it was 39 last year, it seems to me that if there's no cost to us, we would want to have these on as many buses as possible, because if there are repeat offenders, and they get a ticket on one bus, then they figure out they don't ever get them on that other bus, they'll just keep passing the other bus. It won't do anything to keep them from, to just keep, keep them from passing some buses.
Is there a reason we...
Staff recommendation, this, we, you know, the committee did not try to design to a number. That's staff implementation program. That's what they're here to do, working with whomever they choose as a vendor. It's whatever, I appreciate Mr. Bushnell's point. He's right. I mean, because when I looked at the numbers, I did 100% and said, holy cow, that's a lot. Because clearly, we have a problem, and certainly, even just on the anecdotal two sample, one school bus has 440 violations, and the other had 100 violations. So, clearly, we have some routes, we have some areas of the city that we must really target to your 24 number.
Well, it just seems to, the 24 number came from Mr. Hawkins, and last year's number was 39. Clearly, it's not 10. And clearly, as presented, this says 10 buses. I'm all in favor of the program, but I would like the program to be more comprehensive.
And it can be. You know, we've been assured by the vendor that they will put on as many cameras on as many buses as we'd like for them to be.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bushnell.
I'd like to echo what Mr. Bushnell said. I think even if there's one violation, and that's, that happens to be the bus that a child may get hit at, because you can't predict that, that I would like it to be more comprehensive. We put Rapture in all the schools because we wanted to know who was in all of our schools, not just part of our schools. It was a true safety message. And we are at urban city with more and more development continuing to happen. Those routes are going to continue to change as construction continues to take place, as, you know, apartments and things are being built, and those buses, we don't know necessarily, they may not have had a problem this year or last year, but they may next year, or they may not next year, but they might the following year. We won't be able to keep as good a track of that if we don't have a more comprehensive plan, as described by Mr. Bushnell.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I think it was an excellent presentation, great program. Something that occurred to me, though, looking at the revenue breakdown, is there any cost to the police department going over those pictures? Because even if it's minimal, if it's added up over the course of a year, I would, I'm just guessing, there would be some, some time that's spent doing that as opposed to something else. So, will there be a cost they will give to us or assign to us based on the time they spend looking at the pictures?
So, we've had extensive conversations with the police department, and the police department have determined that there will not be any cost to the school system for their services. They're going to train, I think, five different employees to be able to review the program and the process, and they have indicated at this time that they are not going to charge the school division for any, any time or effort that is being put into this program.
Mr. Chair.
Was that Ms. Ball?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that was my only concern was the police department. Do we know exactly how much the vendor filters out when they watch the footage? Because I'm sure there, it would catch a bunch of legal passes of buses or maybe people on bikes, and how much footage they're going to be sitting through in our police department if they just forward everything to us?
Well, they're not going to forward everything to us. They're going to be looking at all of the, all of the violations. For example, if a car is already halfway past a school bus, when it catches them on camera, when the lights come on, that won't be a violation. They'll take those out all the way. So, we don't want, our goal is not to try to catch every person that goes past the school bus if it's questionable in any way. It needs to be a black and white, very obvious type of violation. We certainly have many violations out there. So, if it's one that's on the, on the edge, about whether or not it is or it's not, we will not pursue that. In fact, when we get to that screen where we say where you have to accept or reject, the vendor right here on this screen, if the police department rejects one of, one of these possible potential citations, they will have to write an explanation to the vendor to say, well, why did you not accept it? Because the vendor doesn't want to keep sending down violations to the police to review, to waste their time, if they don't consider them a violation to begin with. So, there's going to be some extensive filtering from the vendor, and they only want to be able to go to the ones that the police department will be able to look at and go, yep, that's, that's one, that's one, that's one. They don't want to have to sit there and guess back and forth whether it's a, it's a violation or not. They really want to go, we have enough people passing school buses that we don't need to be on that fine line of being, whether it should be a violation or not.
You still have to stop.
I don't do it.
All right.
I just took driver's ed, and if you're across a median, it's not illegal, but I don't, it would probably still catch that.
Right.
So, I just don't know how many people they have through the vendor who are actually filtering it out.
The vendor would, would filter all of those out. And if they didn't, for some reason, catch all of them, the police department certainly would.
Ms. Porter?
Yeah. So, where does, so you touched about the data goes into the cloud. Who owns that data? The vendor, or the schools, or the police?
Well, the data goes, well, I was happy that it didn't go through our systems at all.
Well, that's kind of how I feel, too.
It's not going to affect our bandwidth or anything like that. So, I'm not sure who owns the data. I guess that we would own the data, but I don't know.
It would be the company. Why don't you speak to that?
The vendor.
Thank you, Board members and Chair. ATS would own the data, and my name is Nathan Mosby. I would service the implementation manager for your program, should one come to fruition. ATS would own the data until, at which point in time we determine that a violation actually happened, then that data will become the property of the school board. Because then, of course, we'll have a documented violation, and if we need to pull that information for historical records, it, of course, is your, your data to do with what you will. But ATS will be managing the data from the roadside back to our processing center in Arizona, and that data will be, will be encrypted and will be protected the whole way.
Okay. So, I'm going to come at this from a very, very different perspective, which is, I'm used to being the minority opinion on this board. I'm a little taken aback by the field of view, the field of regard on that camera. There's a whole lot of information in that field of regard, and it's sitting in a cloud, and you guys have access to it, and we don't own it until you give it to us. I don't want us to own it. Okay, so, statistics are telling us that there are 12, I don't know if there were accidents or, so there were 12 deaths a year across the nation. Less than half of those 12, so less than six, are because of cars passing stopped school bus. So, what we're really after is changing behavior. This is not a, you know, no, no parent should ever, you know, find out from a school system that their child was hurt or killed getting on or off of a school bus. So, I don't want to discount the safety about it. But there is a balance here, and there are a couple of situations that I'm not sure we've thought our way through yet. I'm a little taken aback by the revenue sharing is with the schools, but it's the police that have to do sort of the heavy lifting of, is this a violation or isn't it a violation? And they're not asking for any money, yet they're not going to bill us for their, their five people either. So, you know, I'm kind of interested in that. But it's the ownership of that data. You know, we've been, if you've been paying attention to the news, the, you know, all of the data that was collected by the telecommunications companies, that were being used, the whole Ex-Snowden thing, this is a, this is an area where we don't have a whole lot of policy, and we've got a lot of people very, very worried. That point of view represents an awful lot of information way beyond our schoolchildren. And what kind of liability does that put us into if, say, somebody decides something happened nearby home because there's a school bus stop just right outside my driveway, and, you know, somebody smashed my car windows in? Are they going to come to the school to ask for that data from those cameras? So, I'd like to know a little bit more information from an intellectual property perspective, and what does that mean to us as a school system? Because we're the ones providing the cameras. The other thing is, I was going in the exact opposite direction as Mr. Bushnell. I don't know how easy it is to tell whether or not the buses have the cameras on them. You know, if what we're really about doing and what we really... You know, if what we're really about doing and what we really can guarantee we're going to have an impact on is driving behavior. That camera will not stop a child from being hit by a car. All it will do is record the incident. That's really what we're talking about. It will not prevent an accident. It just records what happens. So the behavior we're going to change is the fact that murderers are now aware that there are cameras on our school buses. Can we get that same behavior change that we're interested in by not having 30, 40, lots and lots and lots of data that our private citizens who are walking on public streets are going to be captured and it's going to be held in a cloud somewhere where there's not positive control, but the school's name is associated with that data? So I'd like to see, you know, what is that knee in the curve of how do you change the behavior of the murderers with the least number of cameras and minimize our exposure to possible uses of that data beyond what we were thinking of? Because I just don't know what the policies are, but I could easily see how somebody would want to, you know, subpoena somehow getting a hold of that footage because it was made available as a result of public funding. I don't know what the answers are, but I think it's something we need to think through pretty thoroughly before we go forward.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? If I can find my... What can I do?
This is not funded by us, correct? There's no cost to the school system?
Correct.
It's funded by...
You move the motion. I'm going to second it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I have a motion on the table by Mr. Albrecht, seconded by Mr. Bushnell, that the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve the stop-arm enforcement camera system implementation as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Carry 6-1.
But there was agreement after the motion was made that as presented did not limit to 10.
Correct.
Presentation said 10. We said...
It... Well, do we need to... I think we're okay with that, aren't we?
I just wanted it stiffened.
Right. Okay. Consider it stiffened.
Mr. Chair, I have a question outside of the vote. I think it's pretty recent valid points, and at some point it'd be nice to hear from the company some of the experiences of other jurisdictions, whether it be incidents that she alluded to or other things that occur. So, I mean, we cannot foresee everything. It'd be kind of nice to know what we're getting into.
And how they safeguard the data and what their best practices are.
Correct. Can we get that information eventually?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd also like to add that our school... That the Manassas Police Department will be working also with Falls Church Police Department. Falls Church has been working for two years now, and so they have sat down with them and gone over the situations that they've encountered and talked with them about the process that they've put in place as they've interacted with the school system.
You know, there's been some data transfer with the Arlington County Schools, both public schools as well, as we're getting ready to launch a program there this summer. So I think their discussions have been had.
Mr. Chair. Sir. To Mr. Williams' point, I mean, there's a lot of staff work that now has to happen. Staff, council need to work to get a city ordinance. There's a whole lot of communication out there, so I think to the point of an update presentation, maybe in the July timeframe. By then, I would hope the council will have a... One of the reasons why we raised second reading is there's a lot of stuff we've got to do so we can have it in place by the start of the school year. Maybe in the July timeframe, we could get a presentation answering some of those questions and also what's our rollout really look like. That'd be fantastic.
Okay. So is the direction of the board by the end of July or in August? Is there a timeline that you wish to have that back?
We only have one meeting in July, if it can be done as soon as possible, I would say.
Okay.
Anything else before the board? Move to adjourn?
Second.
Punched by Mr. Albrecht, seconded by Mrs. Sabetzky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry 7-0. We are adjourned.